Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Towns COVID Town Hall meeting for tonight. The meeting will begin in about five minutes. For all those in attendance, microphones are going to be muted by the host at the very beginning. Please leave your microphones muted to prevent background reverberation and noise. The mayor is going to moderate the meeting by first introducing the panelists and engaging each of them in a few questions within each of their areas. Following those brief presentations, the mayor is going to open up the floor for public comment. When the public comment period starts, use the Zoom features of the application to either raise your hand or type a question in the chat window. The moderator, which is the mayor and myself, George City Manager, will call on each raised hand first and unmute and remove the comment or intern. And then we'll move to those questions that are in the chat window. Once all of those questions have been cleared, the meter is going to return to the mayor for any follow up and closing. We'll begin in just about five minutes. All right, welcome to the Towns COVID nineteen Town Hall meeting. The meeting will begin in just a moment. For those attendees coming in, microphones are going to be initially muted by the host. Please leave your microphones muted to prevent background reverberation and noise. The mayor is going to moderate the meeting by first introducing the panelists and engaging in a few questions with each of them in their areas. Following the brief presentations by the panelists, the mayor is going to open up the floor for public comment. When the public comment period starts, please use the Zoom's raise your hand feature or type a window in the question in the chat window. The moderator, which will be the mayor and myself, will call on each of the raised hands individually. And then we're going to unmute and remove you to each commenter in turn. We'll move through the questions posed in the raised hand feature first. And then we're going to go to the chat feature to answer the questions there. Once they've all been cleared, we're going to return to the mayor for any follow up and closing. Right now I'm going to go through and unmute all the members of the council that are in attendance and the mayor. And the mayor can begin the meeting as well as unmute the presenters as well. All right, just a moment and we'll get started. Rick, it's gonna, I'm going to turn it over to you. I believe you're already unmuted.
Okay. I want to welcome everybody. This is a special meeting of the council. So do we need to go through the formal roll call?
Yes, please.
Why don't we do the roll call before we go into anything else?
I can do the roll call. This is Anthony.
Hang on, hang on Anthony, I'm going through and finding some council members that are on the phone first. So if you see any, please unmute them.
Okay.
The list keeps moving as people join the meeting, so it's hard to keep up.
We just need to do the roll call for who's here right now and as they join, they'll be joined.
I'll do the roll call as they join. If they notice that they've joined the meeting, I'll list that in the minutes afterward.
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilmember Whitmer. Leist. Lampres.
I'm here.
Excellent. Lewis. Vice Mayor Lewis is not here and then Mayor DeGolia.
Yes, I'm here. Okay, so I want to start with a statement. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to have this first Atherton Virtual Town Hall. Like with so many things around this COVID nineteen experience, this is a moving target. We're learning how to engage virtually and we hope to be able to do a good job today with this inaugural meeting. We know that we will learn from this town hall and we encourage you to provide us with feedback so that we'll do even better next time. We know that you have a lot of questions and concerns and we're holding this meeting to enable you to share those with us because they're important to us and we want to hear what you have to say. If we don't address your issue, I encourage you to contact us. I respond to every email that I receive from an Atherton resident and I know the other council members do too. You can contact the council at council@ci.Atherton.ca.us and you can contact our city manager, George Rodericks, at G Rodericks@ci.Atherton.ca.us and those webs, those email addresses are available on our website. Before we get started, I want to address two things. First, I want to express our heartfelt thoughts and concerns to anyone who has a family member, loved one or associate who has contacted this virus. The reason that we are all sheltering in place and we've now been sheltering in place for five weeks is because of the virulence of this disease and the fact that we have no existing defenses against it. So it is important for us to keep in mind the victims that suffer from this every single day and we're doing everything that we can to reduce that number. Second, I want to thank our medical service providers and everyone who is providing us with essential services under these extremely stressful conditions. Certainly, this includes our town staff, our police staff, but it also includes those that work in our grocery stores, our postal and delivery workers and anyone who is providing us with the service that we need to be able to get through this extremely difficult and unprecedented situation. Now I'd like to walk you through how we're going to handle the virtual town hall. We have asked several people, a total of nine of us to be on a panel who represent different areas of concern. The city, our fire department, our police force, ADAPT, which is the Atherton Disaster and Preparedness Team that is our very local response to any emergency. Two, medical providers from Stanford and Anna Eshu. Anna will be joining us in about a half an hour. She's our congresswoman and I will give a brief introduction of each of them, I mean really brief. And I will ask each of them a question so that they can address the substance that they're dealing with, to sort of give you information about who they are and then we're going to open it up to questions. And you can ask questions either by clicking at the bottom of your screen. For those of you that are on a computer, the participants tab, that will bring up a menu on the middle of your screen, which will list everyone that's on the call. And if you click your name, then your hand will be raised and that will inform us that you'd like to make a comment or ask a question. Also, next to the participants tab at the bottom of your screen is a chat tab and you can click that at any time and indicate that you have a question or even state your question. And we will take all of those raised hands and chat questions in order that we get them. And if you are on a telephone and unable to see those, then you can, once we're in the question and answer period, you can just indicate that you have something to say and we'll then call on you and unmute you when the time comes. And again, I know we've got about 150 people on the call right now. If we aren't able to get to an issue that you want to raise, please make sure that you reach out to us. So the first person on my panel is our city manager, George Rodericks. And George, if you could just give everyone a brief sense of what the town is doing and and what we aren't doing during this period.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the town is actually still operational. We have staff that are coming into City Hall. Let me turn on my camera. You can see me. We have staff that are coming into Southern City Hall on a kind of an ATB team approach. So it's half the staff. The rest of staff will fluctuate in through working from home. So Finance Department works from home a few days a week and then comes into the office the other days a week. And that's so we have social distancing in the office and can continue to address normal everyday functions that we encounter. The post office is closed, Town Hall itself is closed to public contact. The Public Works Department, they're still operating in the field, processing encroachment permits for emergency work as it comes up. Building departments doing the same thing. There are a few building projects that are active in town only because it's emergency work or safety work related to the particular project itself. And they're abiding by the town's standards for construction activity. And the same goes for the Town Center project under the new shelter in place order. The Town Center project is considered an essential governmental function facility, so it can operate for construction on a limited basis. And then, of course, Public Safety Services are business as usual. They're out and about in the field. Most of their time these days is spent addressing some concerns with pedestrian safety and landscaping activity and other things that are going on in the community. That's most of what's happening right now.
Thank you. Is Steve McCully on the call?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Okay, Steve. Steve is the chief of police of the Atherton Police Force, which is kind of frontline in in the community and dealing with COVID nineteen. Steve, if you could give a quick perspective on what the police force is doing and how you view your role.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Throughout the last three weeks, we've been often asked by our residents, what are we doing as the police department to keep our residents safe? And then also to, what are we doing to make sure officers are safe? So what we're doing is we are attempting to limit all public contact, if ever possible. At the same time, we're providing the same seamless police services that our residents are used to. We're handling all cases by telephone, by Skype, by FaceTime. And then we're maintaining strict readiness for any other emergency as needed. We're keeping our police department safe. We recently had all of our folks tested with the new COVID blood antibody test and I'm happy to announce that all of us are negative, negative. It gives us a sense of solace that we know that we are at least COVID free for now. I've required all of our officers to don surgical masks when we're out in the public. Daily, we're doing body temperature checks and symptomatic tests to make sure that we're healthy when we come to work and we go home. We also have, we've adapted, we've activated ADAPT for humanitarian mission to make sure they're providing assistance to us. And our officers have resources in case they do become infected for quarantine and for rest. And I just want to take a second, Mayor, if I could thank all those that are attending our residence. There's been an outpouring of support for us, providing us surgical masks, hand sanitizer, catered meals. You name it, our residents have been out there to help us and we really, really appreciate that. So thank you.
Great. The next person on my panel is Harold Schappelhoman. Harold, are you on the call?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Hi, if you could just give a quick summary of what the Menlo Park Fire Protection Department is doing with respect to COVID nineteen, I think that would be great.
Yeah, I appreciate the offer to be on the call tonight. We're doing a lot. A lot has transpired in the last thirty days. Initially, it wasn't a good ride for us. We had people that had attended a class down at San Jose at the fire department. So we had what we call some area exposures. That's the same group, but you probably read about the mercury where the COVID went through parts of their department and sidelined a lot of their personnel right out of the gate, which we were concerned was going to happen to us. In total, we had and have had about eleven people that have either been quarantined, tested, and then finally, all of them now have been determined that no one had COVID nineteen. No one's been positive, which is a great thing, despite some early concerns about calls that we had been on and getting phone calls back from Stanford Hospital and so forth based upon potential exposures on positive patients. So that's about 10% of our workforce at the time. We were very concerned about how that would impact us if it continued. But fortunately, it did not. What that really did for us, though early, was I think address, have us address employee concerns about testing, which at the time was terrible. We had to very quickly do a lot of things on the fly that I've never had to anticipate doing before. We literally sent people over to Hayward to get tests that were made here at Menlo Park because we couldn't get those tests here. Stanford wasn't testing at the time. The county had rules around that and, you know, most of the testing has been if you're symptomatic, which for emergency services personnel, when you have close contact, that doesn't mean every time that you're going to be comfortable that you, if you don't have symptoms, you weren't exposed. Why is that a big deal? We don't want to bring it into fire stations and have it spread that way. Nobody wants to go home with that, number one. But number two, for the community, you want to ensure that when we come into your homes, to treat you medically, that we don't have it and give it to you and your family members. So how are we addressing that? We put a special unit in place. We actually moved our Rescue seventy-seven out of Bellhaven, moved it over to Fire Station Six at Oak Grove and Hoover and downtown Menlo Park. And that unit, which is a two-person kind of utility looking truck, is, I think it was one of the first pandemic response fire units in the country, but only again because we had to make all these moves very quickly. We had people volunteer to get on that. We worked on what our cash needed to look like, equipment. And we ended up putting equipment that we have actually in our urban search and rescue equipment cache, which is our federal response team in play. So we added, we added our Level B suits, which are hazmat suits. We went to full face masks. We had cartridge filters initially. Now we've moved those over to what we call a PAPR. It's a positive pressure or pressurized filtering system that's a belt mount and cartridges faced towards the rear of the person so that they're not exposed to the front. And then we really had to work on our decon procedures, which again are familiar to us based upon hazmat material incident calls, but to do it in a way in which we could get in there and decon our personnel after every single call and including address some of the patient issues. We've had about sixty to seventy COVID, you know, related special calls the county dispatch puts us out on. It's all over the district. We won't know if those people are positive half the time because that would be things that information will come back to us, but we assume that they are. And so what we're doing there again is upping the level of personal protective equipment, making sure that we go to someone's home, if they can come out, they can come out to us, giving them a mask. If we have to go in, typically our engine companies will ask for Rescue Six to come in. Again, they're in a higher level PPE. Everybody has that level PPE on every one of our units, but we're not suiting everybody up. And the last thing I think that maybe some people would find interesting, I know I certainly have, is our ambulance provider for the county, American Medical Response, that we work very closely with. Their call volume is about 25% down. I would say we're probably close to that as well. The ERs are probably going to say the same thing. The good news is, you know, the ICU beds are not all taken. And I think the real positive news in the county is that this wave has not hit us the way that it hit New York, for example. So I think we're very, we're in a really good position with our personnel being all at work. Haven't gone through all the issues that we've gone through. All our procedures are very good, solid, you know, leading the way with the unit that's responding. And then AMR told us today that typically in a year, they go through fifty thousand plus N ninety-five masks. Currently across the United States, because they're a provider for ambulance transport across the country, they're going through twenty-five thousand N ninety-fives a day. So within two days, they reach what they give out in a single year on the supply chain. So that's obviously unsustainable unless the supply chain catches up. And so that's what we're dealing with too. There's a shortage of face shields. There's a shortage of gowns for first line personnel, clinics and hospitals and care facilities. So, you know, I'm glad that we have equipment that we can clean and then reuse over and over again. It's turned out to be kind of the best strategy, I think, for us, the paper products, which are more really things that, you know, clinicians will wear in the, in the hospital setting and so forth. That's not really what we would do in the field typically. So, you know, having changed our way in which we operate has really benefited us. But again, you know, the number of incidents overall are down, which is good. And we're 100% staffing. I've never left that.
Okay, thank you, Chief. My next person is Linda Barman, who is the Associate Director of Stanford's Express Clinic, Express Care Clinics. They're the leading outpatient response to COVID nineteen at Stanford. Linda, are you on the call?
Yeah, I'm right here. Can you hear me?
Yes, great.
Great.
So what I wanted to ask you, Linda, is if you could please define for us how it is that you and Express Care Clinics are involved with COVID nineteen and maybe give some perspective to those of us on the call. When do you think things are going to change such that people could start to see their physicians or their medical care providers again?
Yeah, those are great questions. So at Express Care, we're basically similar to an urgent care. We're Stanford's version of an urgent care. We always see a lot of people with cough, cold, flu, pneumonia. And as a result, you know, when the COVID started coming out, we were the main place that was seeing coronavirus. And in the first week, several of our staff got, were exposed to a family of patients. We're having to contact tracing and all of them, notify everyone in the waiting room that might have been exposed. And we realized really quickly, we really need to change how we do things. We're not going to have anyone left to take care of patients. So we overnight, literally overnight, switched over to about 80% video visits or remote visits so that patients could still see their doctor but do it remotely from home and not have to come in and worry about potentially getting exposed to coronavirus. And also keep our staff safe from possibly getting exposed. So we are now doing about 80% of our visits by either telephone or video remotely. We can still see people in person. We also started a drive-through a little bit over a month ago. The main one is on the Stanford campus. That was the first one. We started that. There's now seven locations throughout the Bay Area within the Stanford system and also at Kaiser and payoff that we were one of the first. And we've seen a lot of first responders and love taking care of you guys. So it's been a privilege to do that. We also set the drive-through and we just started what we're calling our Crown Clinic, which is an outpatient clinic to follow our patients who have coronavirus. A lot of patients who have COVID don't need to go to the hospital and we want to keep them out of the hospital, keep them out of the emergency room, keep them at home. So we've established a special clinic with nurses and staff where we can check on them regularly. And if they do need to be seen in person, rather than going to the emergency room, bring them into a special clinic that's dedicated to coronavirus patients. So they're in one location. An addition and a separate part, we've established a respiratory clinic, which is also part of Crown. So if someone's coming in and they have a cough and we don't know if they have COVID or not, they're not sitting in a waiting room with patients who do have COVID or who patients who are just there to see their geriatrician or their OB-GYN or their dermatologist. So that just started. We're trying to do that so that everyone can be safe coming back to the clinic, which I'll touch on in a moment. And we're also now our new big project, which we just started addressing this morning, was figuring out how to do the antibody serology testing on a broad basis. I know we are prioritizing first responders, but figuring out how to test as many people as quickly and safely as possible. So that's our next big project we're working on. That was, I'm glad you asked about when it's safer people to come back to the doctor. Understandably, people are scared to come to the doctor. They're worried they're going to be in a waiting room and be coughed on by someone with coronavirus and come home with something serious. We've really made a big effort and especially with the Crown Clinic now, anyone with a cough, anyone with a sniffles is actually being seen in a completely separate clinics. We feel like once the shelter in place order is lifted and obviously once the shelter in place is in effect, you shouldn't come in for elective things. But any point, if you need to be seen, we want you to come in now. We don't want you to wait if it's potentially something serious. And once the shelter in place is lifted, we feel very confident that we've completely changed how we do things in a way to make it safe for you to see your doctor again.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My next panelist is Norma Vogelberg and Tom Trussing, who run the Atherton Disaster and Preparedness Team. The ADAPT is an organization that is focused on education, preparedness and response. And they are our Atherton's local arm to immediately contact people in our neighborhood. And Norma, if you can divide it up between you and Tom as you like, but if you could just please speak to what ADAPT is doing right now. And I know that we've got area coordinators and we really haven't on a, on a broad level, extended down to block coordinators. But I think this is an opportunity that you're looking at to make that happen. And if you could just let us know how that's going and how people can help.
Sure. And thanks, Rick. I appreciate the fact that Tom and I have been invited to speak on the call. So Atherton is divided into fourteen areas. And those areas were determined by the Menlo Fire District. Each of those areas Each of those areas has an ADAPT area coordinator, and if we're very lucky, has two or three area coordinators. These are important individuals because they are very committed to preparedness and responsiveness, and they work with Tom and I, Colleen Haight and Jeannie Jensen, who are also on the board, to deliver messages to the block coordinators, and they in turn go out and share these messages with their neighbors, their direct neighbors. So it's a really viable way of taking care of everyone in Atherton and making sure that if there is a need, we can support what that resident needs. So how this works is you have, all of you on the call have hopefully received a letter from your area coordinator. They've identified themselves, they've given you their telephone number, their email, and their home address. So we're very transparent. And they've asked you if you would let them know your name, address, email, and telephone number so that we can stay in touch with you. What we have found is while many of our Atherton residents have email and they respond to us using email, we still have many residents who are seniors and they don't have email. And they have been very appreciative of the efforts we've made to leave them notes in their mailboxes or to knock on their door when it was safe to do that. And our role right now is to work with Chief McCully and to make sure, as he says for the Atherton Police Department, no call is too small. And we are really taking the message of our governor, our Senator Jerry Hill, our Congresswoman Anna Ashu, and our mayor to reach out to every single person in Atherton and make sure that they are okay and let them know if they need help to give us a call. If it's critical help, of course, to call the police department. But if it's help of another sort, you are not alone. You can call ADAPT and your block coordinator or your area coordinator will help you out. So my request for everyone on this call is if you haven't submitted your information to us, please go to our ADAPT site, which is GetReadyAtherton.org. Pretty straightforward. Scroll down to the bottom of the landing, landing page and submit your information, and we'll put you on our list to make sure that we can reach out to you. And if you'd like to help and be a block coordinator, that's what we need right now. People who just will check in on their immediate neighbors. So that's how we're supporting our town. And ADAPT does take into account the fact that receiving information, emails, telephone numbers, is, is very important to us to reach you, and we do not share that information with anyone. In fact, in my conversation with our mayor this morning, they can't share their information with us and we can't share our information with them or the police department. So when you connect with us, you're really connecting with your neighbors and your friends. So please consider letting us know that you are available and letting us know how we can help you.
Okay, thank you, Norma. My next panelist is Paul Jamalian. Paul is a physician with Stanford, and he also is involved with ADAPT. He leads the medical coverage effort for ADAPT and has been very involved with them for quite some time in Atherton. Paul, I wanted to try to direct you to address the issue on testing. Like what tests are currently available for COVID-19? Who is available for testing? When will we get to a point where we can start to broaden the testing to go beyond those that have symptoms?
Those are all excellent questions. As to who we're testing, what tests are currently available, I work at Menlo Medical Clinic in concert with Dr. Barman, who we work with a lot. And currently, we have, also have a drive-through COVID testing clinic in our middle field near Fire Station 1, and we're using the nasal swab, which is a PCR test, which tests the RNA of the virus, see if there's an active infection or not. And that clinic's been running for several weeks, and trends so far recently have been showing a decrease in people driving through in terms of having symptomatology, which is probably going to be good news. In terms of other testing, as Linda alluded to, is the antibody test. And that test is being used mostly for first responders to see if individuals have immunity to it or in special cases in which they might test negative on a nasal swab PCR because it has moved to the respiratory tract. And using an antibody test in the early phase might catch those individuals in transition where a nasal swab may be negative. In terms of other testing, especially for our first-line responders, Stanford also has introduced a new app called the First Responder COVID-19 App. And it was helped, it was a joint effort between Stanford and Apple. And what the app allows our first responders to enter any symptomatology they may have were subject to having a COVID-19 infection. And if there are enough components that would predict a test would be necessary, they will be referred for such testing. So that's a good thing that we can do for our first responders. In terms of knowing when these tests will be available on a broader purpose, we're able to test pretty much all our patients who need COVID testing with the nasal swab currently through our drive-throughs. In terms of the antibody tests, hopefully that will be expanded because obviously knowing what the baseline population serial conversion for that antibody will give us a better denominator in all our calculations for determining the current prevalence and exposure of our population to COVID-19 to give us more accurate ways to calculate its presence in our community and hopefully eventually immunity to this virus.
Thank you. Is Anna Ashu on the call yet? I know Anna had a call in San Jose, or she was on a town hall in San Jose, and she'll be joining us any minute, but it doesn't look like she's here yet. So let me just give a little bit of perspective from the Atherton Council. You know, we are now in the fifth week of this shelter-in-place, and we, for the first time, are having weekly meetings of the council to address anything that's related to COVID-19. Two issues that have come up that we've spent a good deal of time on and that I know there's going to be questions on, on this call, but I might be able to address some of that just by giving you the information about what we've done already. Deal with both gardening and construction. And when this shelter-in-place order was issued by the chief medical officers of six Bay Area counties and subsequently a seventh county joined us, and I am proud that we, as the San Francisco Bay Area, were the first region in the United States to implement shelter-in-place. And we're seeing that in, in the, the way that the curve of those infected has changed over time. You know, this virus came into the United States, into California, initially from flights from China. And, and we have, I think, done an excellent job at controlling it, and if we hadn't, we'd be in the situation that New York is in today. So different medical officers have had different judgments on what are essential services and what aren't essential services, and that's reflected in the different orders that have been issued in different states and different counties within California. Initially, any housing construction, including residential housing construction, was allowed as well as essential public works construction. And when the Atherton Council first met, when the first shelter-in-place was issued, we expressed a good deal of concern at the potential for spreading the virus on work sites if there weren't strict guidelines to manage the way that people would interact. And therefore, we decided to shut down all construction in Atherton, which we did at the very first meeting that we had. And we took the next two weeks for a subcommittee of the council to meet with representatives of the Builders Roundtable in Atherton, and these are builders that come together on a monthly basis to meet with our town staff and to address construction-related issues. And we worked extremely cooperatively, put together a set of very strict guidelines. I'd say the top of the list of the guidelines, and I'm not going to go over them with you, but the top of the list is anybody who is sick in any kind of feeling of flu or cold-like symptoms, similar to what Linda Barman referred to, is not to come on a job site. So whereas last year, if you were slightly sick with a cold, you might go to work and just, you know, avoid coughing on people, today that at the very beginning, we said that's just, you can't do that because you don't know who has this disease and who doesn't. And therefore, the most protective thing is anybody who has any kind of symptom doesn't come into contact with anybody else. And we put, and over the two weeks, we put together a very comprehensive list of guidelines that was well-received by the builders, and, and we met as a council to approve that and put it into force. And the day that we met, the chief medical officer came out with a new ruling that barred all local construction. And Atherton was one of very few communities in Samatail County that had barred construction from the beginning. So it hasn't gone back, but we've got these guidelines. And once we're able to go back, we're going to use those, and it's going to enable us to allow residential construction to come back sooner than it otherwise would have. The, the other area that we've had the most discussion on is gardening because all of us have received many, many emails about questioning why gardeners who generally work alone, don't have contact with residents, don't, don't work in a group, therefore appear to be very isolated and, and not at risk of spreading the virus. And the reason that the chief medical officer included gardening as a non-essential service is because gardeners typically go to multiple houses. And if they catch this disease from wherever they might get it in their lives, then there's a risk that they're going to spread that virus to multiple locations, and it was too much of a risk. At the same time, we know that we have many elderly residents in this town who can't do the gardening themselves. And, and many of us, you know, we use our gardeners, so we don't have lawn mowers. So it's very hard to mow your own lawn when you don't have a lawnmower. And lawns, as, as people are going to comment, are getting long. It's now been, what, five weeks? So how do you deal with that? Well, we think that there are a set of guidelines that could be created similar to the ones that we've done for construction that would allow gardeners to come back and be properly managed. And we have recommended that. I've sent an email to the chief medical officer. I've talked to the legal counsel in the county. We're definitely pressing this point. And at the last council meeting, the council decided that we would send a letter to the chief medical officer suggesting that we open up the ability for gardening to start as long as there are strict guidelines, and, and we're going to pursue that. So that, those are the most pressing issues that we've dealt with. And, and in the context of both of those, it's what, how do we protect our staff and in particular, our first responders? It's absolutely essential that we keep this virus out of the, you know, being spread within our first responders or else we're in really serious trouble. And, and we've come up with a whole series of ways for our police department to interact with people without, well, with minimizing the risk of, of contact. So that's pretty much where, what I've got to say from the council. So let's take questions. I don't see anybody with a hand raised, but I know that there's a number of chats.
As you're looking for that, just one point of clarification here, there are a couple of hands going up. With respect to the shelter-in-place order from the county, the city council has the ability to make it more restrictive, but doesn't have the ability to make it less restrictive. So that's why the council is pushing on the county to address the issues of gardening and things like that, housekeeping or other necessary services for those residents that need them for a life safety type issue.
Okay, great. Thank you, George.
Can you hear me?
I thought we were going to be called on.
Daniel, I've got you with a hand up.
I heard Anna call in.
Oh, is Anna on the call?
I am.
Oh, Anna, before I go to Daniel, sorry, I had asked if you were on the call before and...
You could, I could hear you, but you couldn't hear me. So, thank you.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you, Rick.
I know you're really busy, running from one meeting to another, like our lives used to be.
Well, I'm not really running. My new office address is right here at my kitchen counter. So, Rick, thank you for bringing us all together and, and for your leadership as mayor, to, to the team from Atherton and all the professionals. I had the pleasure of listening to your presentations, and they were all highly instructive. I just very quickly will say, you know, how proud I am of, of my constituents, the people of our congressional district and the larger region for making the sacrifices that you are making in order to push the numbers down. As Rick said, we were the first region in the entire nation with the early stay-at-home order, and I think that that has really not only saved lives, but it has kept the numbers down in terms of the spread of the disease. So really bravo to everyone and to our healthcare workers. They're just, they are the bravest amongst us and how blessed we are to have Stanford here and the work that Stanford is doing. Just very quickly, if any of the residents of Atherton have questions that deal with what we have done in Congress relative to unemployment benefits, the cash transfers, the assistance to small businesses, which is a very, very big issue because we have to do more funding. There were 770,000 applicants for $350 billion, and that's all committed in less than 10 days. Federal student loans, hospitals, community health centers, I stand ready, or any other question, I stand ready to answer them. So thank you again, Rick, for your leadership, and a thank you to all the others. So thank you again, Rick, for your leadership, and a thank you to all the others that are on the call. And I lived in Atherton for almost 40 years, so Atherton means a great deal to me and to my family. So it remains a marvelous community with important leadership in San Mateo County and our region. So I thank you for that, and Rick certainly carries that tradition on.
So everybody may not know, but Anna is a member of the House Committee on Energy and Commerce. And how timely is it that she is the chairwoman of the Subcommittee on Health? So you have got to be absolutely in the middle of policy around this whole COVID-19 situation.
We are. There's some days, Rick, I feel like I'm drinking from a fire hose. But, you know, the work is just so important. There are great needs on the part of so many in our country. And I'm working from morning until night, conference calls, telehealth meetings, you name it. But it's what the American people deserve, and we really are waiting with bated breath for the breakthroughs of drugs that are already approved by the FDA to see, and Stanford is very involved in this, as is UCSF, to see if some of these approved drugs will prove to help those that have a mild case of COVID-19 and those that have, that are more severely ill. So I was on the phone today with the FDA commissioner, so we're working closely and also working hard for the administration to implement and carry out the laws that we've already written. So you're very kind, but I stand ready to answer any question that anyone may have for me.
Okay, well, why don't I start? Because I think this issue about testing is a huge issue that all of us face, and especially as we see this curve starting to flatten and the discussion turning to how we come out of the shelter-in-place, there's just so much that we don't know about this virus, and the last thing we want is to run into a second wave. The best description that I've heard of how to, of how to think about coming out of this situation is that we're not, well, we're flipping a light switch, but it's with a light switch with a dimmer on it. And we're turning that dimmer up very slowly. But can you share any perspective on the testing situation? Because we all look at, you know, what happened in, and we understand we're different from Asian countries, but we look at what happened in South Korea, where they really managed the testing in a totally different way than we have. And I don't know how we come out of this without greatly increasing the testing, and I just don't know how that's going to happen. I don't see it happening right now.
Well, I agree with you, Rick. Testing is foundational to all of this. And people ask me, do you think we have to keep, stay with the stay-at-home order and for how long, or are you for reopening our economy? I think it's a false, kind of a false test, because we want both. But we're not going to be able to reopen and get people back to work without testing. You're absolutely right. We had a very slow start, and it was through the CDC. There was no private sector involved. The CDC put out diagnostic tests. They then had to recall them because they were faulty tests, and we have really never caught up. Only 1% of the American people have been tested. And that is a test to see whether someone has the virus or not. But moving into this next phase, I believe it's going to be up to the governors, every state, because of the president's announcement yesterday. And I think we're fortunate that there has been a very thoughtful plan put forward by the governor. But this next phase of testing, before we get to a vaccine, and God willing, that vaccine will be a cure, we have to ramp up the testing across the country, certainly here in California. But with that testing has to come tracing. We really have never made a broad determination, a broad and deep determination as to who has had it, who has had the virus, who hasn't. Those that are asymptomatic, we just don't know. And so that's why the testing and the tracing, and of course, treatment, when necessary, will have to follow. But those all go together. And it's going to, it's going to take not only the machines, they have to have the reagents, they have to have the swabs, and they need to have really a whole core, I think, a testing corps in California and in other states. Of course, we're a nation-state in order to carry this out. So you're absolutely right. Testing goes hand in hand with the reopening of our economy. And it really, God forbid, we don't do what the scientists are instructing us to do and then fall back and have more people infected, which would be yet another disaster for our economy, not only here in California, in our congressional district, but across the country.
Okay, thank you, Anna. So let's now turn to take some questions. I'm first going to take the hands that I've got raised, and then we'll go to chat. Daniel Lehman, if you could, if he could be, please be unmuted.
Great, I think I'm unmuted. Thank you for taking my question. Real quickly, I'd like to double down on all the comments being made in the chat, and I hope the council will continue to appeal to the county on the gardener issue. It's, I think, a terrible hardship, even if some of us are paying them, and it is a health issue for many residents as well. I have a specific question. I apologize for the specificity, but it has to do with construction that relates to repair. We have a fence with us and our neighbor that has holes in it and is falling down. It's a risk because we each have swimming pools, which are no longer protected. Their animals are getting into our yard. Is that considered construction and therefore prohibited right now? Or is that considered some kind of safety issue, and we could go ahead and get that fixed? Thanks for taking the question.
George, do you want to answer that?
Sure. The fact that you have a pool does kind of put it into the safety realm. I'd connect with our building official, Mike Greenly, and then he and I can examine that issue and make a decision with respect to replacement or repair of the fence. The pool issue is a big safety concern, in my opinion.
Great, thank you.
David Jones.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Actually, I'm Ann Walker. I'm married to David Jones.
I didn't think it was David.
Yeah. Anyway, yeah, I kind of started the online chat about gardeners. And again, with apologies for being so specific, I really appreciate that you recognize the issue, and it sounds like you're trying to get some relief so that some of us can get our gardeners to do at least some of the really crucial work. I have a specific problem because having the grass grow too long is a serious health issue for me. I'm allergic to grass pollen. It's now, it's now starting to bloom, and I can't take, can't take, help me with the word here, antihistamines, because they give me a long QT syndrome, which then puts me in danger of a heart attack. I also have asthma, a heart condition, and a diabetes, so I'm at really high risk for COVID. The last thing I want to do is get allergies, which then turn to a respiratory infection, which then make me very, very susceptible to the COVID virus. Isn't there some way that based on those specific facts, that I can get, I can get an exception now so that we can get our grass cut and I don't have to go through all that agony?
So for everybody, the issue with gardening is that there is a health and safety exception for residents. And who makes the judgment about whether there is a valid health and safety issue? It has to be the residents. That may be questioned, and at some point, somebody could challenge you, but it's your judgment to make. We know that in the FAQs that have been released by the county, that the clearing brush that would present a fire hazard is definitely a valid exception. And it sounds like in your situation that you've got a valid exception. But, you know, that's something that each person has to make for themselves, and none of us want to see this virus spread. So none of us want to be cavalier about it, but there absolutely is an exception for safety of residents.
But doesn't, just to follow up, I mean, I would much prefer to have the appropriate person in...
We lost you there, but it...
I would, I would like to have someone in Atherton, having brought this up as a specific issue, say, okay, it's all right for you to have a single person come and mow your lawn every two weeks or whatever is reasonable to keep it from actually giving off pollen, grass pollen. I mean, I actually had a guy scheduled to come today, and then I got these, you know, nasty grams with the, I got a phone call, I got an email telling me, you know, you can't have gardeners, and it's, so we canceled them. So meanwhile, I'm getting more and more at risk of getting sick. And I don't think I should have to suffer having the police come by and start yelling at me and then make the argument.
Well, A, you're not going to have the police come by and yell at you, because they're not doing that. B, yes, you can send George or, you know, the building department an email and asking them for the exception, but I'm telling you that it's really ultimately your call. And if you deem it to be a safety of residence issue, which it looks to me like it is, then they're going to tell you exactly what I'm telling you. And one of the problems with Atherton, as you know, is we don't have a lot of staff. And right now, the staff are not in the office. You know, they're remote, just like all of us. So nobody's going to come by and actually look at it. They're just going to work through the issue with you and give you their best judgment. And that's true for everybody. So let's move on. The next one I've got is Paul's iPad.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
First comment is, I'm disgusted with the lack of testing. That is telling me, we have no idea when we're going to get through this. My question is to Chief McCauley, and I hope Anna Eshu is available. I'm concerned in the near future about social unrest. And I'd like their comments.
I can take that, Mayor. That's a good question. With any events like this, there's always a concern of civil unrest. In this county, all of our chiefs, we meet regularly via conference call, and this is always part of our normal response protocols and readiness. We always have plans in place. We've been reviewing those plans, and so we have resources within the county, within the region, and from the state as needed for civil unrest. But I do think this is completely different from riots I've been involved in and other incidents I've been involved in, in that we're lucky that we have food supply chain, we have gasoline, we have medicine, and we have medical services open. So it's quite a bit different. There have not been any hints of civil unrest in this area. And I think with continued communication like this, making sure we're addressing people's concerns and helping reduce anxiety and fear, that we will not see that in this area. Good question. Thank you.
Great. Anna, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, let's see.
Oh, you can hear me now.
Oh, there you go. Great.
It goes on and off, I guess, maybe automatically. I share the, the deep frustration of the caller. It's important to note that we have, that Congress, in the very first bill that we passed and was signed into law, that was on March 4th, it was testing, 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 testing. So the administration received the, the resources, which were considerable. It was something like eight and a half billion dollars. That was just the beginning. We've done even more subsequent to that. But it's up to the administration to implement. And I, I guess I run the risk of sounding partisan. I'm simply stating facts. The administration has really been ham-handed on this. But now it's going to be up to the states. That's according to the, you know, the White House yesterday and the, and the announcement that was made. It'll be up to each state to carry out the testing that needs to take place now, which is going to be, I think, even far more, it's going to be more complex because there are several steps to it, and it's a different kind of testing. But I share your concern. This is the equivalent of flying blind. And there, I think that it was regrettable that the president didn't choose to use the Defense Production Act. It's an old law, but what it does, it's very powerful, the president can use to instruct the private sector, industry, manufacture ventilators. We need 100,000 of them in two weeks. We'll sign a contract with you. You will get your money upfront, because the private sector is not going to stand up and do anything voluntarily. They're in business. They're a business. But unfortunately, those really very powerful tools and the toolkit were not, were not used. And so it has been a very, very painfully slow process. And you've seen where, with the PPE, the personal protective equipment, ventilators, the swabs, the nasal swabs that are needed, it has been a, it hasn't been a smooth ride. Let me just put it that way.
Okay.
Mayor DeGloia?
Yes.
This is Vice Mayor Elizabeth Lewis. I have a question when you can get to me.
Go for it.
Hi there. This question is for Congresswoman Anna Eshu. Hi, Anna, this is Elizabeth Lewis calling.
Thank you for your beautiful service.
Oh, thank you for yours, too. In your introductory remarks, you mentioned the Paycheck Protection Program loans and that the money that was allocated was quickly used up. Is there going to be some additional funds? I know Congress is talking about it and trying to get that through. Can you kind of give us some insight on that?
The answer is yes, Elizabeth. And that's being negotiated right now. I think that, I know as of yesterday, that between the House and the Senate, majority, minority, plus the White House in their negotiations are very close. So yes, there will be another tranche of funding. It will be at least $250 billion, and it can't come soon enough because the small businesses are, they really are hanging by a thread. And we all know that they are the backbone of our national economy, and I don't want to, they're closed now. I want them to be able to, be able to ride this period out so that they can reopen and not be loaded with debt and that their employees are taken care of as well. That's what the legislation does. So I think by the middle of next week, the money will flow again.
Thank you so much. So if your application has been submitted, but it is waiting for some additional funding, you don't have to resubmit. It's probably in the...
No, you don't.
you don't have to resubmit, it's probably in the queue somehow.
No, you don't. No. If they've been submitted to a lender, they've approved it, then it's in the queue.
Thank you so much.
Mayor DeGolia, may I make a comment about the civil unrest issue? This is Tom Pressing of ADAPT.
Sure.
Fear and anxiety are the genesis of that kind of activity. And we really do have a very robust resident response network called ADAPT that's actively engaged in keeping all of our neighbors informed about the pandemic, providing resources where necessary. And that kind of interconnectivity throughout the community is one of those kinds of threads that keep the whole together and would reduce that potential. So as we continue to communicate neighbor to neighbor, we drastically reduce that potential in our community.
And I want you to know that I do an e-newsletter that goes out to maybe 50, 65,000 constituents throughout our congressional district. That for a second week in a row, I've highlighted neighbor to neighbor and all the links in the various communities urging people to not only read about it, but also engage in setting up, setting that up in their communities.
Great. Okay, let me turn to any questions that there are in the chats. George, do you have a list of those?
I have a running list of those I don't think have been answered yet. But before you go there, Farhad Tabrizi has one, he has his hand.
Oh, okay.
The address is.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I have a question both for Congresswoman Anna Eshu and mayor. I'm a small business owner in construction. All of my members, you know, as, you know, I paid out about $2 million worth of salaries and subcontract, but most of my payment to those people are in form of a 1099. It's not the employee, there's no payroll. So even though, I don't know how do I qualify for this payroll, but these guys are coming to me and asking to borrow advance because they don't have money for rent, they don't have money for their daily activities. So I'm advancing them. And as a small business owner, at the same time, I'm paying my taxes, my mortgage, my insurance, everything, and I cannot work. I have a small team of four or five people that I can follow strict guidelines. But I'm afraid that, you know, if this continues, I'm going to go file for bankruptcy. And all these people and my construction and working at Atherton will be basically in the middle of the, you know, bad situation, bankruptcy or whatever. But I want to, Congresswoman Anna Eshu to kind of answers the problem with the small business with having subcontractors, right, and salary people.
Well, I, I know that part of the law that we put in place does deal with those that, employees that are considered contractors. But I don't know, I'm not sure if that applies to you. If you could leave your name and your telephone number with the mayor, maybe at the end of the call or however you're doing this, I promise that I will look into your case and, and get back to you and give you a very specific answer because you deserve one.
I appreciate it. I think that's the case for many, you know, contractors in the area. And I know in city of Atherton, we have many of those that following strict guidelines, but now are facing really big trouble. So I really appreciate all your hard work.
Make sure I get the information.
Thank you very much. And my second question to mayor is, okay, I have a small crew of maybe three that any given time that I can separate them, I can restrict them, I can put them in quarantine. But when can I start work? My project is halfway done and I'm worried with all the rain coming and all the drainage issues we have in Atherton. This project could be a total loss. So how soon, if I follow guidelines, I can start my project?
Well, right now residential construction is prohibited by the medical officer under the current shelter in place. So we're not going to be able to open up any residential construction until that changes.
May 3rd or what's the date?
Well, right now the order ends on May 3rd. And it's not clear what extension there will be. There will certainly be some form of extension, whether that applies to residential construction or not. We don't know. As I said in my opening remarks, the Atherton Council has sent to the county the guidelines that we developed for residential construction. And, and we've encouraged the county to use those as a format to develop guidelines for the whole county. We don't know where they're coming out on that. So unfortunately, I can't give you any real guidance on that. But we are prepared once, once the county allows residential construction, it would be residential housing construction, we're prepared to enable that. If you haven't seen a copy of those guidelines, you can get them. You can either send me or George Roderickson email and we can send them to you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor. I will send you my information. I really appreciate you guys understanding the hardship we are going through. We even couldn't get a break on our taxes for property. So we have to pay those taxes. I mean, they extended till May 3rd. But anyway, anything you guys can do to make us survive, we really appreciate it. It's getting really hard.
We'll do everything to help you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eshu. Really appreciate all your hard work.
Okay.
Great. Mark Dubb?
Yes, this is Mark Dubavoy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question for Ms. Eshu or maybe a comment. Every disaster movie starts with a government not listening to scientists. I don't know if you've noticed that or not. And COVID.
I think I've had a front row seat to that.
COVID crisis is not much different. I believe that there's an issue that I would suggest needs to be addressed at federal government level, which is why I'm bringing it up. And that is that scientists have been warning us for decades that one of the consequences of climate change was going to be that there would be more pandemics, that they would move quicker and that the viruses would mutate quicker. And there's even some studies that go back 10, 20 years that we're saying at the rate we're going around the year 2020, something like this might start to happen. So sometimes science does work. In my opinion, all the time, but anyway. So it seems to me that we're all focused on the problem at hand, which is a horrific problem. And it's obviously the right thing to do. But I think that this might be an opportunity for some people at the federal level to start looking more carefully into the future. Because if we don't do something about climate change, we're heading in a direction where this outbreak is going to look mild by comparison to what we're going to be seeing down the road. And yes, it's crucial to find a vaccine. But I think it's also crucial to, to start to try and eliminate the key factors that are increasing the chances of these things happening and, and getting nastier and nastier. So I would really try and encourage you, and maybe you can encourage all your colleagues to, to start thinking about this and start some initiatives and start funding it. Because it's, if, if we don't, it's going to be the next disaster movie.
Well, I appreciate what you said. It's, your words are full of wisdom. Where do I start on this? There's an irony, in my view, relative to science and, and scientists and members of Congress. And the irony is that those that are, you know, in denial about climate change, what that means to the only home we know, which is the planet Earth, that they are now clamoring for answers from the scientists of how we are going to get through this. So maybe in the darkness of this pandemic, that's a good sign. But from the time I first joined the Congress to this moment, when I first joined, science was absolutely foundational. The first set of witnesses for any issue at any committee were the scientists. That was foundational. We would take their counsel, their advice, and then we would build legislation on it. Now they are banned, they've been banned from even testifying and they've been driven out of the federal workforce. So I agree with you. And God willing, this, as I said, this dark moment that we're, that has been visited upon us might be an enlightening moment for us all. So thank you for your, as I said, your wise words.
No, I, I just want to add, you know, this, this is not a political issue, this is a.
No, I know.
So, so.
Let's go to chat questions.
Sure. So we have addressed some already with respect to landscaping, when construction is going to be able to begin again. And you just heard the comment to Congresswoman Eshu from Mr., from Mark. So one that we haven't addressed yet is pool cleaning. I did put an answer in the FAQ column. Pool cleaning services are deemed necessary for safety and sanitation and they are permissible at this time. Non-essential services with respect to pool cleaning such as, I don't know, cleaning of the deck area and things like that should be deferred to minimize risk of transmission. Another question that's in the chat was, do we know if the county is going to be requiring masks when out in public? That has been adopted in numerous other counties as of today. And this afternoon, the County of San Mateo's health officer is anticipated to make a very similar change to the shelter in place order that will require masks when you are in public dealing with the public, not in your own home, not in your office, if you can seclude yourself in your office, not while you're out exercising. But if you're going to be interacting with a member of the public, then yes, a mask would be required. Another question was with respect to exterminators. Those are specifically allowed as an essential service under the shelter in place order. So you can have those. That includes the spraying of trees and other vegetation for infestations. There was a question about how many cases are there in town? At this point, we don't know of any specifically within the town of Atherton. As the chief mentioned, we did have our, our public safety personnel, first responders, take the antibody test and none of them had been infected at this time. That does address another population, population issue about immune. We just don't know. There's a lot of statistics on the various county websites that they're starting to track now. So eventually that sort of information may show up there. There was another question for Congresswoman Eshu about SBA loans. See if I can find that one.
Why don't you hold on to it and then I can get all the questions that have been posed and, and be able to respond to the constituent.
That'd be great. We'll put those together for you.
Thank you very much.
We, we do have a question about testing and tracing. So maybe Linda or Paul could answer it. The question is, who will determine the tracing methods and when will tracing be available?
Yeah, that's, so tracing is done by public health. By law, all positive COVID results, COVID nasal swabs are reported to public health immediately. And then it's up to the public health department to do the tracing. What the public health department does is contacts the person and finds out more about who they live with, where they've been, where they've been around. And then public health is responsible for doing the contact tracing. And testing extensively, testing quickly, and then doing the contact tracing is going to be essential when we open things back up. So as soon as someone gets COVID, we can jump on it right away, find out, find out anyone they've been around and stop it before it spreads more widely. This will be very important.
Great. Okay, thank you. Greg Lowe, do you have a question?
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, just a very simple question. What do you recommend about picking up your mail and your newspaper and, and your, and your front yard?
Well, I can tell you what I do, which is.
Do you want me to, do you want me to take that? I'm not sure if that's a medical question or not, or Paul, Paul, you want to handle this or?
I'll just put a few, my few cents in on that one. I think it's okay to handle. If you're concerned that there may be contamination because it's a paper product, it's been shown that COVID can survive on surfaces for a while. Cardboard surfaces is about four hours as to infectivity after four hours, not really well known. If it's concerning to you, you could leave your mail outside in your protected area in the sun. That will definitely kill it much faster. But in general, I don't think you have to worry about that because most mail handlers are already wearing gloves and your mail's been in the, in the truck and the storage bin for over 24 hours prior to being distributed.
Thank you very much.
Great. George, were there any other questions on the chat?
There were not.
Okay. Does anybody on the line have a question?
I've got a quick question. I was wondering how many people are employed to do the public testing?
You're, you're, you're far away from your speaker, so it's hard to hear you.
John, you still there?
I think John was asking for the resources available to do the, to do this public testing when it is time to do it. I think he was asking about what resources are available for that.
And so, so John, if you're there, were you referring to the nasal swab to see if someone's infected or the serology testing to see if you've been exposed in the past? I don't know if you're still there.
Yeah, I was talking about doing the, the tracking.
The tracking. So tracking is done by public health. They're doing the best they can as far as resources. They are a public entity. So I think Anna Eshu might be able to answer that better.
Do you know how many people they have employed and is that a satisfactory number of people?
I, I don't know off the top of my head exactly how many they've employed. I know they've ramped up significantly since this all started.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. Oh.
I see someone.
What's that, Linda?
Oh, I see someone in the chat is following up on the testing and tracing. This is huge effort going forward. Please don't tell me the federal government will be determining it. The federal government is definitely talking about this a lot. We're very, very lucky in this area. We think we have a lot more resources, scientific, medical technology, financial and otherwise that a lot of places in the country don't have. We have been doing the testing, has been kind of a grassroots effort locally. The tracing, like I said, will be done by public health and we have a lot more testing than a lot of places in the country. So don't worry about the federal government determining who gets tested or traced. That's more of a local decision.
Okay, Paul, do you have another question?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to applaud you. This is wonderful. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. One of the comments in chat from Patricia Briscoe is asking if we can text people about future meetings because I take that the APD phone blast mostly goes out over landlines, which most of us never answer. Yes, so I have, we're pretty much at the end of the meeting. I have three requests and one will address this.
Can I address that here real quick? Can I address that here real quick?
Go ahead, Steve.
From the chief of police. So we use the San Mateo County Alert System, and for the town of Atherton, we have 7,400 phone lines. That doesn't mean they're only landlines. There are also cell phone numbers. So we are outreaching. We can also text and email through that system, but it only works if people sign up. So they need to sign up for San Mateo County alerts, and they need to sign up for the Atherton alerts so we can reach out when we do these robocalls and news flashes.
And what, how is it that they go about signing up for the Atherton alerts?
For the Atherton alerts, they just go to the Atherton website, just Google the town of Atherton.
Right.
And you'll be able to navigate. And same for San Mateo County, just Google San Mateo County Alerts, Office of Emergency Services, and it'll take you to a website where you can easily sign up, select which kind of alerts you want, and select what kind of notifications you want.
So that is one of my three requests. Two of them have to do with contact. And I see Farhad has a chat in here. Anyone who hasn't signed up for the Atherton Alert System, if you would please send an email to Anthony Suber, our Assistant City Manager, he is at asuber, A-S-U-B-E-R, at ci atherton.us, sorry, ci atherton.ca.us. That's A-S-U-B-E-R at ci atherton.ca.us. And let him know that you want to be on the notice, the Atherton Notice System, then you will be able to get a contact from email or text. In addition, I want to follow up on what Norma had previously communicated, which is ADAPT is completely separate from the town of Atherton, and they have a separate contact system. And it's not shared. It's totally private. And to sign up with them, you need to go to getreadyatherton.org. And the final thing that I just want to ask everyone to do is be kind. Be kind to your neighbors. Thank those people that are providing us with services. I talked to the mail delivery person at my house yesterday, and she is absolutely exhausted. She is working so hard and trying so hard to stay away from this virus, and yet she's out every single day. This is true of everyone that's working right now. So please, thank people. It's so important. And I want to thank all of you for being on the call. We had over 200 people on the call. There is no doubt, this is the largest number of people that's ever been in an Atherton meeting. So I'm glad that we had that. I'm sure the next one will be better. I want to thank you. And I think that's it.
We thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the whole team.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick.
Okay.
Thank you, Anna, and all of you, all the panelists. Very nice.
You're Elizabeth. Thank you.
Okay. Bye.
Bye-bye. Oh, no, they're dropping off like crazy.
George? This is Tom Pressing. I kept track of the attendance. At your height, you had 216.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Yes, it was outstanding.
Are we doing breakout sessions now or this is it?
No, the breakout sessions were too complicated to manage.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, I'm going to go make my family some dinner then. Have a great night, everybody, okay? Take care.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Welcome.
Looks like we have somebody who just popped their hand up. Sanjay Subheeder. Sanjay, the meeting is just about concluded. Could I help you with anything?
I just want to say thank you to Rick and Steve.
Thanks very much. We'll pass that along.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Wasn't a. I didn't get my three-year-old left side. Have it up tight.
And then I think if we sign off, the meeting will end and they'll all be ejected. Is that correct? Yes. All right, why don't we do that and then we could hook back up in a second or two. Okay, so I'll just leave and then I'll rejoin in a few. All right.